Okay. Right, welcome to June 10th, 2025, Millbrae's Special City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Present.
Vice Mayor Halliburton.
Present.
Mayor Fang.
Here.
All members of the City Council are present.
Thank you very much, since today we actually have a meeting and we have the public here as well. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance for those who are able. Please be seated. And today, we're here to conduct the interview for two Planning Commission opening for the new term, which is a four-year term. The two vacancies on the Planning Commission is for the four-year ending in June 30th, 2029. And we have two candidates that were scheduled to interview today. One is Samuel Choi and the other is Catherine Quake. Each candidate will have about 20 minutes to answer the same two questions from each council member's, total of 10 questions, at the podium. And for fairness, candidates will be waiting in the lobby until invited in to be interviewed. Once interview is completed, you can remain in the council chamber. And the meeting is not televised, but it's being recorded for city record purposes. The first candidate is Mr. Samuel Choi. And Mrs. Quake, please exit and wait in the City Hall lobby. And the City Clerk will invite you back into the chamber when it is your turn. Thank you so much. Mr. Choi.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Mayor Fang. Yeah, thank you very much for returning.
Thank you for having me, it's an honor.
Yeah, after about a year and change, it's refreshing to see you wanting to come back.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
It's not always the case. So today, each one of us is going to ask two questions, like I said a moment ago. And then you have an opportunity to answer them. I think total time per candidate with about 20 minutes or so. Yeah, so you figure maybe about two minutes.
Okay.
Roughly thereabout. You know, keep it consistent, keep it short, and then we can move on this as expeditiously as possible. Thank you very much. Shall we begin, who should we begin? Shall we begin with Mr. Nguyen, Councilmember Nguyen? And then we'll move this way, and I'll ask the last question.
So just two questions in a row or one at a time?
So these questions are, you know, sample questions. You can come up with your own if you so choose, but if you do have your own question, then I would ask that you ask the same question to the next candidate, just to be fair.
Hi.
Hi.
So please describe what you think of future for Millbrae, what it looks like? And then like in terms of the physical buildings, the shape of the city, transportation network, architecture, aesthetics, and also while trying to preserve the national scenic environment. So what do you think remains, what do you think remains same and what do you think needs to change?
Wow, that's all 20 questions in that one question? I'll take a stab. I think there are a lot of opportunities for Millbrae. Given where it's located, we spotlight opportunities for its multiple transporta-, multiple modal transportation. It's connected to the airport, the BART station, Caltrans. It's pedestrian-friendly in parts of it. And there are, so I think I have high hopes for my kids to grow up in a place where they could play and thrive and live. In terms of natural resources conservation, it's a beautiful place to live and to be a part of. We have a varied topography, so all the way from the hills to the bay. We are, I know on this capital plan, there are different parks and projects that are coming up. I'm very excited to be a part of developing or influencing those development. I think mixed use is, as much as it's a cliche term, it's the way to go for Millbrae, given its population, the demographics, and the opportunities that mixed use will bring to the city.
Following up, I didn't get details on the transportation network. Maybe if you can expand on that, that'd be much appreciated.
No, I mean, Millbrae literally is the gateway to the Bay Area. If you imagine visitors coming in from afar, coming in, arriving at San Francisco International Airport. For residents to live here, you could take BART, you could take Caltrans, a number of regional buses. It's right in the middle of a thriving Bay Area neighborhood. And so, given all that, it's primed for businesses to grow. It's primed for residents to, it's a great place to live. You are, it's home, it's easy to call this place home for a lot of people who lives in the Bay Area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And Councilmember Rinaldi, and then followed by Councilmember Riley, and then Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Fang. First off, Samuel, thank you very much for deciding to run for Planning Commission again and applying for the spot. It's commending you on that, stepping up and serving. My question to you is simple. You're very familiar with the downtown specific plan, the station-specific plan. What specific items would you change in those plans, given the experience you already have sitting on the Planning Commission?
On the downtown-specific plan, I would want to look at ways in which the streets can be safer and be plugged in to how visitors could visit our businesses in the downtown area. I think that's one area where we could focus on. It's, mixed use is the way to go for Millbrae. And I think it's, you're always balancing between competing interests. And so I think by having a robust and safe streets that feeds into included in the downtown area, that would ensure that businesses thrive. And the other plan, specific plan you're talking about was about the gateway one?
Correct.
The gateways, as the name suggests, the gateway-specific plan literally marks the gateway not only to Millbrae but to the peninsula. And in some way, someone could argue that's the gateway to the Bay Area. I think it's a location where you are, where different uses, possibly non-compatible uses are coming together at this one node. And so, I, the part where I think we could use some work is understanding how it integrates with other jurisdictions, with the states, in particular on El Camino Real and coming through the Passover and understanding how the Caltrans, the high-speed rail would come into Millbrae and work with us. I think those are some areas that we could make sure is addressed as plans change for the different agencies, as plans change for Millbrae, as our city grows.
And as we're at today with the state of current affairs, do you have any ideas off the top of the head for better ways to connect that side of Millbrae to the west side of Millbrae? Because oftentimes I hear from residents that they feel that that side is disconnected from the west side of Millbrae.
Yeah. Recently, I think there was a new park, I think by, by enlivening activities on that side of Millbrae and connecting people on the west side to the east side is going to help tremendously. The businesses, making sure that businesses are attractive to everyone. I know even at the gateway, there are new businesses that we visited recently. There are night markets there at that location. And as the Alexander Development comes on board, we're attracting new office workplaces, workplaces for new businesses, for new residents, possibly workers who live in Millbrae. I think making sure that that node are offering opportunities and offering activities that also attract residents and businesses from the west side will really help connect the people. Thanks.
Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Samuel, for willing to take a time off, reply the Planning Commissioner. My question for you is, what is your understanding of the rules and the responsibility of a Planning Commissioner?
Oh, wow. I am, I've learned a lot in the past year and a half serving on the Planning Commission for the first time ever. What I'm most proud of in my role on the Planning Commission is to be a participant on facilitating a forum where the public can come and speak and provide their opinions. It's not the Commissioner's duty to necessarily make a decision about what's good or bad, but is to provide that forum and to bring people here and make sure that people have access to knowing the changes that are going to impact them very immediately. So that, to me, is the primary role for the Planning Commissioner. And of course, more mechanically, the Planning Commissioner has responsibility to make sure that the decisions that are made are made in accordance with the rules, the general plan. They're made in accordance with public meeting guidelines and to make sure that there is, that we are building smartly and resiliently as Millbrae changes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much for your service and for reapplying this year. How would you approach forming your decision on a project that you personally like, yet which is inconsistent with city development policies and standards?
I would favor to make sure that the project follows city standards and policies. That essentially is the job of any commission. That is the responsibility. It's not about what I like, and very often, we have competing interests, likes or dislikes. There would be a project that come before the commission with an architectural design that a Commissioner might not be in favor of. But it's not his or her job to insist on his preferences, but rather to make sure that there is a dialogue with community members to people who are affected by the potential changes and make a decision based on that and making sure that that decision is aligned and comply with city policies.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Choi, thank you for joining us again, you know, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I have two questions here that are listed, and both of them are not on the paper. But I intend to use both on this, you know, both candidates. The first one is, Millbrae is a growing city, both from a residential and commercial point of view. We've recently introduced a local density bonus program that is still being discussed. We're working on a plan to renew our parking strategy. And the council is clear about our focus on economic development and public safety. How do you see in terms of our land use policy, which the Planning Commissioner is in charge of? How do you see, what, how can you make the city more affordable and easier to live in Millbrae? Looking for more of a policy guidance and direction?
I think enabling mixed use and allowing opportunities for affordable housing development is the way to go for, frankly, most cities or any, all cities in the Bay Area and the state, but especially Millbrae. Given our proximity to public transportation, access to different networks and ability to get to workplaces within the entire Bay Area and beyond, I think we are a very attractive place for residents, for people all over the Bay Area to come and be a resident. And so it's very important for us, as the population grow, to allow, you know, ensure there are policies that would be attractive for developers to build those high-density residents. And by building a variety of housing types, the market will respond.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Second question, so the, your, what is the, in your mind, the key challenges you think that will be in our immediate future? And then kind of walk me through your thought process of how you would prioritize policy to tackle those challenges?
Could you repeat the key challenges?
Yeah, key challenges, yeah.
To?
Immediate future.
Oh, for Millbrae, I assume? One of the key challenges will be to responding to the state requirement on housing. I mean, it's a hot topic, it's been a hot topic for over a decade. And I think the key for us is to ensure that developers are attracted to come and build a variety of housing types, housing types that would be affordable to residents of different income levels and to have, make sure that we are working very closely with the developers to be involved, to make sure our residents are involved in understanding what those developments are from the very start, before they even start planning. I think that it's going to be continuous challenge in this state, especially for a place like Millbrae where we have, it's a very attractive place to live.
Just following up on that, I totally agree that we need to be able to balance that out. But given that we do have like, you know, it's different makeup in residential area, how do you envision that diversity still being maintained while trying to grow the city and, you know, with your mixed-use ideas? Like, how do you foresee balancing that?
Did you repeat that part? So how would we balance?
Yeah, how would we balance out like the, you know, how like we're pretty residential, pretty like suburban? So there's a contingent of people that want to keep it that way, but then there's another group that wants to increase the growth, so to speak, right? Or have more mixed use, like what is your vision for balancing that?
I see. No, I think you're right, I mean, there are competing interests. And I think if we are able to, through the zoning, able to identify the height limits, to really hone in on the envelopes within which the developers could build their projects. And we could offer opportunities through the zoning code and the bulk and setbacks. I think there, it's, Millbrae, given the topography and the landscape of Millbrae, I'm confident that there are ways to provide the variation in our zoning that would allow for that mixed use. And I think it's going to be hard work, there's no question about it. But we just gotta roll up our sleeves and work with developers who are willing to come and play.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Riley.
You mentioned you have young children and you are, look very young, probably busy for work and family. So what are interested you in reply for become a Planning Commissioner in the city?
I, no, so I have, I have two young daughters, three and five-year-old. And I want, I want to engage so that in a way that could help Millbrae grow. I want them to be proud to be living in Millbrae and to have a place where they are proud to call home for years to come. I've always wanted to give back and contribute to this place, a place I love. And this is a way that aligns very well with my technical background. It's a way that's familiar to me, given what I do. I'm, and my familiarity with design-construction. So that's why I put my hat in the ring and I would love to continue serving in this, in this role.
Thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Do you see any, foresee any potential conflicts of interest that either have arisen in your tenure on the commission or potentially could arise in the coming years?
So I've been an employee of San Encanto, San Francisco for over 20, 20 years. So I have no private interest either in Millbrae or beyond. There could be a potential conflict of interest if the airport has a project in front of the commission, in which case I would recuse myself, given that's my current employer. Just to be on the side of caution. Beyond that, I'm very familiar with the rules of engagement of public meetings. There's, I have, I fill out a Form 700 on my day job, I would fill out, I would copy and paste. It's the same information that goes on the Form 700 on this, on, for this, for this gig. And so I, and I would be very clear about recusing on any other interest that may arise.
Okay. As I said before, this council has been clear that economic development is an important priority. And Millbrae is open for business. As a Planning Commissioner, you're in charge of land use decisions and to provide oversight and guidance on how permits are being approved. What changes would you like to see made to our permitting process in order to provide businesses and developments a more clear pathway to success and providing confidence to the business community to invest in our city?
Faster, cheaper, better. I think, I know that we're in process of implementing a digital permitting platform. It's by no means cutting-edge technology. There are other cities and jurisdictions who have adopted it successfully, some less successfully. So we can still learn from that. So I think that's one toolbox we could exercise. I think, this may sound cliche, but cutting the red tape and letting businesses know that we're about encouraging them to start new businesses, to reassess the process by which they would have to go through to seek permitting would be huge. Just by way of an example, one of my recent projects in San Francisco is, was to build the new consolidated city center, city, the permit center and civic center. Before the permit center, someone would have to go to 13 different spots to get permits just to open a restaurant. 13, and now you could go to one floor in this one building and go to different stations and get your permit. So there are ways where we could make it simpler for businesses or even residents to get the permit so that they could help us. So we're helping them help us to make Millbrae thrive.
Thank you very much for your answers today. This concludes your interview this evening. And then you can wait in the chamber as we bring in the next candidate.
Excellent, thank you very much for your questions, appreciate it, thanks.
Riley, would you please? It's good to see you, Mrs. Quake. Please take the podium.
Can you hear me?
Perfectly fine. Thank you for joining us once again, after a very long tenure of service.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much. This council would like to ask you anywhere between nine to 10 questions. And we'll start with Councilmember Nguyen and then go from this way to my left. And then we'll try to wrap it up in about 20 to 25 minutes.
Okay.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Hi, so first question would be, what do you think the future of Millbrae would look like? What do you think in terms of the building, the shape of the city, the transportation network, architecture, aesthetics, all the above? And then what do you think remains to be done after that? Like, just give me your thoughts on how you would plan that out.
Okay, well, everything is moving along, things are changing very quickly. I have seen many, many changes to our city since I've been here. And I hope to be here a lot more years so I can be instrumental in kind of making decisions for the future of our city, which I hope to be even better than where we are right now. I think planning is very important. I think you need to make sure that there is development, but not too much development. It's a slippery slope on how to make everything work perfect. So I think I've done a decent job as far as trying to balance out some of that. I'm for a lot of changes because that's bound to happen, because I've seen it over the years. And as you develop your, even yourself, there's things that I didn't think were a good idea several years ago, when I approved them and they've turned out great. And then on the other hand, there's a few that I've approved and I've thought, oh my God, why did we do this? But it's planning and taking your time and trying to make the whole city pretty and good.
So follow up more specific on the transportation network.
Oh, sorry, I missed it.
No worries, like, there's a lot of common.
Transportation is definitely an issue. I think with the fact that right now we're allowing so many buildings and locations to eliminate parking, which is going to make a big difference in the transportation hub. And maybe the next generation will develop and become more transporting by bike and public transit. When I grew up, that's all we all ever had was public transportation. The unfortunate thing is when you get used to the cars, it's difficult. Transportation, it's, it's a shame that we didn't do BART around the bay many, many years ago. And it was quite a hassle even to get it to come down this way. It always stopped in Daly City. So transportation, I think we're most likely going to have to develop mindsets, especially in my age bracket, on public transportation, which isn't the easiest because up and down and stuff like that. But transportation is definitely up on the scale.
Thank you. Councilmember Rinaldi.
Was that one question or two?
Good evening, Mrs. Quake, and thanks for joining us.
Too long, I'm gonna forget.
You're doing well on the one and a half questions, by the way. Thank you for your service. I know you've filled quite a few different roles within Millbrae over the years, you and both your husband Dan. So thank you both for your service to the city. My question is pretty straightforward. I'm sure you're very familiar with the downtown-specific plan. Love to hear your thoughts and opinions on the strong suits of the plan and then the other areas of the plan where you think we could improve a lot.
Well, no matter how good a plan is, it can always be improved upon. I saw today that all the cities, Millbrae and San Bruno, are getting extra funding for the El Camino Real corridor for the Grand Boulevard. And to me, that's part of the downtown plan. And I was kind of looking at the streets and thinking the sidewalk. Um, and I was kind of looking at the streets and thinking the sidewalks are pretty large. Um, as far as the actual downtown, um I think we can improve on the downtown um both with property owners and also so many of them are tenants. Um, if we put our mind to it, how exactly we're gonna achieve it, quite honestly? I've got my thinking cap on it, but I I have no solution right now. And I don't think any one of us um either on the council or in Millbrae has a solution on changing. We all want it changed, but on how exactly to change it? I can't give you a clear answer.
Just a quick follow-up question since my colleague, uh Councilmember Nguyen, got one and a half questions. Millbrae Station's a very important new development to Millbrae. It's right by BART, Caltrans. And we know that we're an intermodal transportation hub and how important that is to Millbrae. A lot of residents talk about how that section of the town feels disconnected from the west side of Millbrae. So given your experience on the planning commission and how much interaction you've had with a lot of residents within the city, what would be your recommendation to connect that section of the city to the west side?
Well, um, there were plans um that were actually approved that ma- made it the Moosie Project on Sarah that kind of connected it a little bit more the flow. Um, so I think that if we don't kind of get that flow from some of the buildings that are built built um on the west side of of the um project, it's gonna be a little hard. But I think um the walking path is okay, but it's not as nice as it could be. Um, I don't know if we could really um I think we could be more connected if it was connected um to Marina Vista, the one over by Millbrae Avenue. I know there was so much said at that time that we ended up closing that entrance. However, I I do feel if we could open it up somewhat and people could connect to all of Millbrae a little bit easier than trying to get in their car. And we know what Millbrae Avenue is like uh right now. Um, so I think that we should try harder, but I think actually as the buildings get completed over there, uh including um the apartments that they've been working on. I don't know how um occupied that building is because they've been working on it so much uh that I think as more people get there and they wanna move over to the other side, I think some of it will automatically. It might just be a learned behavior. But um I think as it gets filled up over there, there will be an overflow to connect the two.
Councilmember Riley.
Nice to see you again, Catherine. Thank you for you are on the diff- many roads in the city like commissioner for different area. Thank you for your contribution and your time. My question for you is very easy. What aspects of your academic work background or experience qualified you to be a City of Millbrae Planning Commissioner?
I think some of it is a lot of experience that I have gained um over the years. Um, and from my other peers, I don't have architectural background. But I do have a sense of um what looks nice and what doesn't look nice. So when I see the plans, I I feel very comfortable. Um, I think it's mostly because I have been doing it for a while and it becomes easier a- as you go on.
All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Quigg. Once again, as colleagues have mentioned, for your service and for your interest in reapplying to the commission.
You guys are ever so kind.
Uh, my question, I'm sure this is an issue you've had to deal with in in the past. Um, but how would you approach forming your decision on a project that you personally like but which is inconsistent with city development policies and standards?
Wow.
Or or vice versa, it could be the opposite.
Either way.
Yeah.
Well, I think that it is important to listen to what the development standards are. And I think that I usually try to either try to incorporate or mediate some of my own ideas that I think are really important with the the development standards. But I think when you get the knit comes to the grit, um I think the development standards do weigh weigh in more.
Thirty-three years, that's no small feat. But thank you for joining us. Thirty-three.
Oh my God. You know, we don't have to say those things. You know why?
The facts are important.
I was gonna say, um I feel like I did thirty-three years ago, so you know. I feel like I'm on my first interview.
But but your thirty-three years passion, it still live very strong inside all of us.
It is. I've always enjoyed building and housing and real estate. That's definitely my forte.
Now, it's Millbrae is certainly a growing city and both from a residential and from a commercial point of view. Um, you know, we recently introduced a local density bonus program and we're working on plans to renew our parking strategy. You knew about both of them. Uh, and you know, the council is clear about our focus on economic development and public safety. And how do you see in terms of our land use policies and how you can make our city more affordable and easier to live?
I don't know how we're gonna make it more affordable. Um, it's gonna be a tough nut to crack, but we can always try. There's always new ideas that come forward and we have to listen to the new ideas, especially if they're gonna help us achieve our goals um with uh density. Um, and like I say, it's really a um a slippery slope, all of it. Uh, uh, when you're up there and when I'm up there trying to make it all come together, you have to have pretty much of a a level mind and listen to everything and then come to your own decision when you vote uh to make sure that you you take all of those little pieces of information and put them all together. I I think it's great on the park plan. I I saw that. I think it's far overdue with the Mills Estate Park. They've been talking and talking and talking about it. So I'm glad it's now uh come to the forefront. Uh, density bonus, you know, I'm not really excited as about as much density as we are creating. Um, however, it's um by going up, you're not using all the land. Um, if you build lower and you use all the land, then you're using up gonna be more cement, I guess. That's probably what I'm trying to say. Um, so if, you know, going up is is still allowing for the density, but it's not taking as much of the floor area or whatever you want. Maybe I'm not making myself understood, but uh I think that's important. I, um, there was something else you mentioned at the beginning. I haven't addressed it. I'm trying to think. Only uh bonus density. I I if I missed something, please remind me.
We'll we'll give you a chance at the end. How's that?
Okay.
Councilmember Nguyen.
So this is more of an open-ended question, but uh what do you think are the immediate challenges uh in your role as a planning commissioner? And then what are what is your approach to address those those key challenges?
Well, our our me- I have to say this now, our immediate goal is not only to approve the projects, but to make sure that they get built. Um, we also um building applications have been less single-family residents because um they've taken so much of our rights as far as making decisions uh with like the second units in the back and stuff like that. Uh, things that we were doing on planning, but um we aren't anymore. Um. Mac, with the next question.
So one one key challenge. Okay, so on on that challenge, right, like uh maybe if we dive a little deeper into specifics, uh what do you think are effective policy uh implementations or changes to to get to that?
To get to that place? As a planning commissioner, I don't make as many policies as um, I mean, the guidelines are there, of course. But I think it's important that we recognize as planning commissioners um the go- the goal of the council and make sure that we kind of adhere like development standards and the goals of the council also. Lot of easy questions here.
Sorry. Thanks.
Okay. Miss Riley? She's good, too. All right. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Let's see, uh. Do you foresee any potential conflicts of interest that may or could arise during your tenure or that have arisen during your your tenure on the?
Um, I don't see any um conflict of interest. I don't know where the conflict of interest would be. Um, I am very careful not to uh when projects come. When you hear of a project, uh often sometimes they will call you and say, can we talk about this ahead of time? And I'm very careful not to do anything like that. Um, I really stand back and wait until the project is before us. Um, I don't foresee a conflict of interest. Um, I know we had um there was a time I was on the planning commission, my husband was on the council and it it was interesting because of course everybody always talks and the attorney at the time had reviewed it and they said, no, there's no conflict of interest. So um I if somebody seems to think there is a conflict, I would be likely to know or talked about it and what they perceive as a conflict of interest. I have no property in the city. I have no nothing in the city other than living here for a lot of years. My kids aren't here, so I mean, uh I'm not trying to achieve a project to help them or anything like that, so I I'm very surprised.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Well, uh maybe grandkids at some point. I'm just kidding. Uh, as I said before, um, you know, this council has been clear that economic development uh is an important priority. Um, and Millbrae is open for business. Um, and as a planning commissioner, you're in charge of land use decisions and to provide oversight on how permits are getting approved. And what changes would you like to see made to our permitting process in order to provide the businesses and the development a more clear pathway to success and provide a confidence to the business community so that they can invest in Millbrae?
Um, as far as uh investing in building, remodels, um are you talking about the whole city or mostly the downtown?
Well, I'm I'm my question is geared more towards the permitting process itself. What changes and improvement would you like to see done?
Uh, before a project is approved, to make it easier.
Someone is seeking a a permit?
Yes.
We've we've received, you know, comments from the public in the past that they they said, you know, I wish your permitting process is faster and quicker and more transparent. What changes would you like to see done that you believe it's important to see this growing city to be more friendly to uh permit applicants?
Well, I all of this internet makes it quite unfriendly for a lot of people. Uh, and I think the personal touch is very important. Um, and when you see people and talk to people, sometimes they don't even realize it's taken longer because you're communicating. Uh, when you're I I know this is probably not the line that you were thinking of, but that definitely came to my mind. Uh, making it easier and more friendly um does help. Um. I have never actually applied for anything in this city. So I'm really not quite, you know, you always hear people say, oh, it took me forever. But I've never really worked with it. Is it the city that's making it difficult? Or is it the applicant that's making it difficult?
Okay.
And see that, although now we've gotten a lot of online um tools for people to see what they're doing and where they are on the project. So um that's a step in the right direction.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for the perspective. I think that wraps the interview. Um, and I think we will probably adjourn this part of the meeting and come back at seven for an open session. Anything else? Um, City Clerk, City Manager?
Um, so when will you make a decision?
Sometime later in these evening. I think it is on the agenda.
Yeah, it is on the agenda.
Yes.
At the end of the.
Vice Mayor, item number, item number thirteen, Mrs.
Item number thirteen, that we will um welcome you back and for another another discussion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. I really do.
Thank you. City Clerk, if there's anything else, I believe this is the end of the meeting for the special meeting.
That's correct, Mayor, and then we'll um we have the regular session at seven.
All right, we'll adjourn this meeting and uh return at seven o'clock. Thank you.